This conference will now be recorded.
It is Thursday, July 23rd, 2020. We are, we'll call our council meeting to order. We'll do a roll call to see if we have a quorum present on the call. Councilmember Josh McCabe?
Here.
Councilmember Kenny Crenshaw? I'm not hearing anything on Mr. Crenshaw. Mayor Protem Priest?
Here.
Councilmember McCosky?
Here.
Okay, councilmember Easton?
Hello.
Alright, so I have everyone except councilmember Crenshaw on the line right now, is that correct? Alright, then we'll just go through staff briefly to make sure we know who's on the line. We've got our city administrator Cynthia Northrup, our city secretary Shannon Montgomery, city attorney Carvin Atkins, I see our police chief Love, and Sean Dinsmore, I believe, is on the line. Our public work... Are missing any other staff that are on the line?
Councilmember Crenshaw is here.
Alright, welcome, councilmember Crenshaw.
And there is Chris Holsey.
Chris Holsey is here. Okay, yes, Chris Holsey, welcome, Chris. Anyone else that I'm missing?
Brody is here.
Alright. Sergeant Brown, welcome.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, we have four of the council members present, so we'll begin in our public presentation and input. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear the comments during this designated time. I'll ask the city secretary if we have any forms that were submitted by the deadline.
Yes ma'am, we do, we have two, and the first one is Deborah B. Craft.
Okay. Hello, Ms. B. Craft, you're going to begin your presentation. We're having some audio trouble there, I'm not hearing anything.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello.
Yes, Ms.
Everyone I have talked to about changing the name of Old Town is against it because we're all proud of living in the Old Town original part of Rome, and we don't think it should be changed. The other item I wanted to address is the funding, the alternative funding for the renovation of the school. What alternative funding, what does that entail? I mean, what all kinds of funding are available? That's something we wouldn't like to know before it's just blanket, yeah, go out and get any funding you want. And then the third thing is on the budget. On page seventeen of the package, it has Main Street, the rental for the City Hall lease that we have right now, last year it was twenty-seven, seven-twenty for the year, and this year, or you have what you, what's on there is a six-month lease in case the rental runs over, and only six thousand nine hundred and three for six months, and half of twenty-seven is actually, you know, thirteen thousand, not six, so that kind of confused me. And then on the next page, on eighteen, on August the 14th, you have slight increase in budget, and yet the amount budgeted is actually three hundred less. Next, looking down for postage, it says decrease from seven fifty up to one thousand, but it's marked as a decrease. And there's several of those in here. Insurance and medical, as it's increasing and yet it's decreased. Building maintenance said that it's decreased to be in line with actuals, and yet it was two thousand last year and three thousand this year, that's not a decrease, that's an increase. And like I said, I went through here and there's two more of those that say increase when it decreases or decrease when it increases. Also, for the park board, it says funds for projects to be determined, ten thousand dollars, and I know that in the park board paper itself, it said that there was a undetermined project for ten thousand dollars. Don't we need to know what that project is? I mean, because the eighteen thousand is staying there for the parks to use, but to single out ten thousand dollars, saying we're going to do a project, but we're not telling you what it is, I think that's wrong. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. It's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, city secretary, do we have any other presentations?
Ashley Majors.
Is she on the line?
I am. Good evening. Hello, council. I'm here tonight to speak regarding item I to which is discussion on any action regarding the sale of city property, which is the old City Hall. And I am requesting that there be put a restriction to make it a historical building. And I'm not, I am against the sale of it, I think it need, we need to look into making it turn it in, turn it into for a lease and for, for the income. Also, you know, just going forward to seeing what council, what y'all are going to talk about, when was it appraised? We, I would like to see if it's been appraised recently. Never sell it from an appraisal on the taxes. We need to make sure that we are selling it from, you know, from what a realist tour is doing because the building across the street from it is going, is the real estate office, it is up for sale for four hundred ninety-five thousand, and the donut shop is up for sale for four hundred ninety-five thousand. So I just want to make sure that we are getting the dollar for dollar if we are selling it at fair market value. So that is all that I wanted to say, plus, in looking at the budget that we, you have listed, a hundred thousand dollars for the road repair, driving around and looking at the streets, a hundred thousand dollars is not going to get us far. On Morris Street, I know that that is our top priority just because of the new homes going in to have those repaired, but that's going to be about the only street that is going to get repaired. But, you know, Dogwood, we have one street that I've asked for, you know, I think I'm looking back at my notes, but I know, I'll go through one by one. Josh McCabe, I know in your, in your little district, over in Crown Point, Rockville, I know there's a street that needs to be repaired. You know, over your guys, LeAnn and Sam, over in your area, there is quite a few streets that I know that you would like to be repaired and Ellis. So, let's see, guys, if you want streets repaired, a hundred thousand dollars, I think we need to have someone before your budget that we needed to have someone come in and bid it because I'm, I'm well against a hundred thousand dollars. But, y'all handled the budget, so that's all I have to say. Thanks, Glenn, have a good night.
Thank you. City secretary, do we have any other citizen presentations?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Then we will go on to announcements from mayor and the council members. I just have two real quick ones. First of all, Northwest Independent School District will begin their 2020, 2021 school year with remote learning starting August twentieth, be September twenty-eighth. If you want more information, it's on their webpage. So we want to make sure we get the word out to all our school age kids. And then also, the city would like to send condolences to the family of Assistant Fire Chief Duncan Henderson in the Reynolds Fire Department as they have lost a member in their fire department, and you may have seen some of the fire departments in EMS in the county for a procession earlier today. We'd just like to send our condolences to the family. That's all I have for announcements. Are there any announcements from the council members? Okay, then we'll go to our first item. Under announcements, we have a presentation of our quarterly Shine Award. Want to bring the city administrator Cynthia Northrup on to talk about our quarterly Shine Award and who is the recipient for this time.
Well, we are happy to announce that Chris Holsey, he's on the line, got the Shine Award for this quarter, the second quarter. He goes out, there are several things that were written about him, all good, of course. He goes out of his way to shine and is really a model example of what shine means. So he's been with the city of Rome for over ten years, he's always eager to serve, he's super courteous and always pleasant to citizens and fellow employees alike. He's always going above and beyond to get the job done, and he does the job in excellence. So, Chris, I know you're on the, on the line, we really appreciate all you do for the city of Rome and serving with kindness, humble, humbleness and excellence.
Congratulations, Chris. We on a personal note, I have enjoyed working with you all these years on many different things, and I admire you for your work ethic and just your positive, your positive attitude toward everything, and the city is lucky to have you on board for working with you for many years to come.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll go on to our consent agenda. All items under this section are recommended for approval for the consent agenda. These items are of a routine nature and require only brief deliberation by right to remove any item on the consent agenda for further deliberation. We have the minutes dated July ninth, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is councilmember Crenshaw, also move.
Thank you, councilmember Crenshaw.
I'll say.
Alright, councilmember McCabe, thank you. Alright, we'll go down the roll call for the vote. We'll start with councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Thank you, councilmember Crenshaw.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCosky?
Aye.
Thank you, and councilmember Easton?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton, I think you're muted.
I thought I unmuted and said aye. Can you not hear me?
Thank you.
Aye.
I can hear you now, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, thank you.
Alright, motion carries. We'll go on to regular agenda, old business. Agenda item C, update discussion and any necessary action regarding the latest developments for COVID-19 and mitigation efforts and actions within the city. This is just an update placeholder item. At this time, the governor did extend his order after our last council meeting on July tenth for another thirty days, so we were able to hold this meeting and next week's special meeting virtually, and we'll await any orders from the governor in August to see if our August held virtually or in person, but I anticipate it will continue to be a virtual meeting. Other than that, that's all I have to update on that item. Any questions or discussion from council on that item? Okay, if there aren't any comments, questions, we'll move on to agenda item D, update discussion and any necessary action regarding the East Side wastewater treatment plant. I think we've got Sean on the line, Sean Dinsmore, our public works director. Do we have any, any updates on that?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, only updates, we did have a pre-meeting, a pre-bid meeting with the engineers and contractors, and we just went over what the, the schedule of the project's going to be and the bidding process, and if they had any questions, they can forward those through the CivCast program where they can gather their plans and pick up plans. And so, right now, as we, we are still moving forward, and we will be bidding in August the fifth, I do believe.
August fourth.
Okay.
August fourth, August fourth.
August fourth, okay, awesome. Alright, thanks for the update on that. Any questions, discussion from the council on that? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item E, update discussion and any necessary action regarding municipal complex renovation project. So, we have Kim Doughty on the line, and she's put together some preliminary design for the community center, and we wanted to share that with you this evening to give you an update on what work has been accomplished since the last meeting. So, Kim, I'll turn it over to you for a minute.
Okay, good evening, mayor, council. We worked on the community center floor plan, as well as we updated some renderings that we did, and we'll show you those in just a few moments. The floor plan that you see directly in front of you, there's three different options for the seating area, but let's look first at the far right floor plan. Can you see that enough? So with inside, as soon as you come in the front door, you will come into the large community area. Everything back behind that first wall is all the existing spaces. Cynthia, could you zoom in on just the back portion of the kitchen areas that we're talking about?
Yeah.
It might be easier for everybody. Little bit easier for everybody to see.
Sure.
Okay, there you go, I think that will work. So inside of the large community area, off to your left, we're adding in some, over some full height cabinets. We'll have room for a training area, so we're going to include areas for like marker boards, a large monitor, TV areas. The kitchen area, everything back behind that existing CMU wall, that's the original cafeteria kitchen area. We are going to subdivide that. So the air space you see off to the right is going to be the fully renovated kitchen. So we will have new millwork going in for upper or lower cabinets. We will be taking out the existing three-comp sink, since it will not, no longer be a commercial style kitchen, so we can turn that into more of a residential breakroom style sink that you would have in your house, allowing more room for storage, prep area. So we will also have areas in there for a dishwasher, ice machine. We will still maintain the range, and we will be able to go in with a residential grade hood over the range. To the left, you will see two refrigerators. This will be able to maintain one of the refrigerators for the fire department, as well as one for the community center. In the center, because it is still a quite large space, even though we subdivided it, we're able to add in a large island area with storage below. So that will give us, everybody coming into the community center, whether you're renting it, using it for the seniors, a large area for prep area in that area. Off to the left is where we brought everything fully up to code for the facility, so we now have two fully accessible restrooms, a male and a female. In the very back of the space, we have a larger mechanical electrical closet, that we're also going to double up that space to be a janitor's closet. So you will see that we are closing off the rear door of this facility just to allow enough space for the mechanical and janitor area. In the upper right-hand corner of those areas, where you see the double doors, all of those areas will be able to be maintained for storage. So when you're not using some of your extra chairs out in your large community area, they could be stored within that space. So what you're seeing is, we're keeping as much of the existing walls that we can, just to maintain, to reduce overall construction cost, but we're able to reuse your, some of your existing doors, and the pass-through that was there for when it used to be a cafeteria, that's still used for a perfect galley-style kitchen to be able to pass things through. We are opening up one of those doors, so the corridor will turn into more of a public access area, and we'll just do a cased opening within that. So out in the community area, we were asked to show three different, or look at a couple of different options to show how we could do some seating within that space. So off to the left, you're seeing the same style table, oh, go ahead.
Before we leave the kitchen, I have a question. Most kitchens for, you know, you have refrigerators for any food that needs to be kept cold. Do you have a pantry? You have pantry for potential dry goods?
Pantry for the dry goods, we are mainly just using the cabinets that are down below, in that center area, the island can be used for a pantry. So, in order to just kind of reduce some of the space, get more areas for more usable space for kitchen area, we're, we had to take out the pantry area. So we, we might can put in some more full height cabinets against that long wall that's subdividing the corridor, and use that as a, for some pantry, and we can reduce the size of that center island, or do, do away with a center island. So we definitely could work in some pantry spaces.
How, how large is the island?
That island is probably about five foot by six, about seven feet. So, it's a pretty good size. So it's basically back-to-back cabinets that are down below.
Okay, I think you will need some type of a pantry option.
Okay. I will add that in. So we can do full height, well, just like a cabinet-style pantry that you would see in your kitchen, which would, we could do several of those. And that's similar to what we are doing out in the community area, so that would still tie in overall design and the use of the spaces. So those ones out in the community areas can be used for, you know, whether it's storage for games for the community center, or, you know, extra supplies or different things, and we can make them lockable if need be. And same thing in the pantry, we can, or the kitchen area, we can make any of that lockable. So whether it's something for the fire department versus the senior center needing to keep their supplies and everything separate, that's an easy thing to do.
But it seems like you're losing a lot of square footage to the corridor. That could just be that, I mean, how wide is that? Is that a standard, I mean, how many feet?
The corridor there, the corridor right now is currently being shown as five feet wide. You have to, for accessibility, you do have to have your door clearances going by, so if you look at the janitor's closet, you've got a three-foot door, to the left of that, you have eighteen inches on the door swing side, on the pool side, so that's kind of dictating on how wide that corridor needs to be.
Okay, so that's ADA?
Absolutely.
Compliance required.
Yes, so everything on here is ADA compliant now, as well as we are bringing everything up to code for, you know, all your energy calculations. Well, fire codes, leave the corridor run, everything that we need, and so well, required exit. So that's, we looked at all the accounts on this, occupancy loads, that's the reason we were able to take out that back exit, because only those front, that exit off to the right and the front entry is all that you really need to get out for a fire exit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Cynthia, if you could scroll over to the left, and we can show a couple of different options on how we can use the community center. The upper option number one, furniture option number one, we are doing six-foot by eighteen-inch deep tables, and we'll show you quite a few different options on that. The first one is done more for a lecture type, so if you are having any kind of classes or training for the city, or if the community want to come in and use this for training, you are able to get quite a few seats in there and tables to have, use the monitor that's going to be mounted on the wall that is currently right now in City Hall, or in the council chambers, as well as a marker board off to your left. If you look at option number two, that's taken all those tables from option number one and put those back-to-back, and now you're able to get six chairs around those and use those as dining tables. So you are able to get forty-two people within that room with those existing tables. Option number three, if you scroll down, that's just taking everything out and you're using all chairs, and then you can use these type of tables that we're showing to actually nest all in that lower right-hand corner. So you see the, the little dashed area? So those are tightening up really tight in that, that area there. So I think that gives three pretty good options that we can show for mixed use of that space. And any extra chairs that you have that you're not using in this can be used in that double-door storage where the existing mechanical room is. So we will be repurposing that space.
Hey, you know, in the existing, in the existing senior center, if I'm not mistaken, we had two refrigerators and a freezer in there because we had donated foods that had to be kept cold, we had frozen foods that had to be kept cold and so forth.
Okay, so do we need to maintain, do we need to have three refrigerators or two refrigerators and one upright freezer?
I don't know, we have to get, probably have to get a committee together for the seniors to really come up with that.
Okay, we can do a placeholder and show that for now, and then as we go through the rest of the design, we can adjust the millwork as needed. But I will go back and show additional pantry space as well as additional refrigerator or freezer space within there. So that may also help reduce the, that center island area.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions before we move on to renderings? Okay. So if you, can you zoom out just a little bit on that one? I think there's a little bit more to the rendering. There you go. So our overall look, we're trying to come up with a cohesive design for the City Hall versus the community center and the fire, fire station here. So what we're doing is, we're looking at overall color schemes to tie in with the existing bricks that's over at the City Hall. So what we're proposing on the existing facility here is coming in and let's paint the existing brick, because right now it's more of a gold color that's not really tying in, it's a little bit more dated. So we recommend painting the brick as well as the metal, so we'll have to do a good prime and paint on that. Then on each side of the overhead doors, we're recommending doing some, some stonework there with some cast stone. And then, since it is a fire station here, we're recommending, you know, painting some red, so those colors really pop and get a little bit excitement to the municipal complex that we're making this. So, within those areas too, we will also have a new canopy and new entry doors going into the community center. So all of this, that's really needing to be done to bring everything up to code, so all the site work will have to be reworked in those areas, just to make sure we have the correct ramps and slopes to get into the building. Okay? Next image, Cynthia. So here's a step back, if you're looking at it from the main road, from our school road, so this is actually showing your City Hall off to your left, and then you're seeing the fire station, community center off to the right. So you're seeing quite a bit of landscaping that's going to be softening the school, those existing trees. We are recommending coming down just because of the age of those, they're not holding up. And then just putting in some extra landscaping just to soften up all the extra concrete that we're putting in. Next one. So this is the view coming So this is the view coming from the other direction of City Hall. Remember that we added a new intrigue for the fire depart, I mean, for the police department off to the left of City Hall. So this shows that new entrance that we're opening up an existing window with the arch. So we have new stairs going up to it. We will utilize the same ramp for City Hall as we will for the police department. And again, we're just really softening up that existing wall just across the front with some landscaping and all the concrete that we're putting in for the parking area. So I think it's going to be a very inviting environment, you know, for the new municipal complex. Do we have one more Cynthia?
No, uh-uh, that was it.
That's it. Okay, is there any questions about the overall renderings or floor plan?
Looks beautiful.
Thank you. We're excited to bring life back to this building, so I think that these renderings will help show. So I think these would be something good to help use for the bond recommendations.
All right, yes, I agree, it does, it helps show us what we've been imagining. These renderings, I really like these renderings.
Thank you. So in the meantime, we will keep massaging the floor plan and I'll resubmit that to staff.
Okay. And then one thing too that I had, that's not on the rendering, but I had already mentioned to Kim was we've got two sets of flagpoles and if it's one big complex, we probably only really need one set of flagpoles at the front of the complex. So I think, you know, maybe there's some space there for, you know.
We could put some more landscaping back in that back area to soften that existing building. So I'll make those changes before we want to post these out for public use.
Sure, okay, awesome. Well, thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome.
Is everybody okay with this initial proposed, proposed design that you see tonight with some of the changes that have been recommended?
You bet.
Yeah, I think it looks pretty good.
Yeah, looks great.
Okay, good deal. So that's where we are. Thank you, Kim, for being on the line. We appreciate you chiming in and getting that work done for us. So the other piece of this agenda item is alternative funding options. And so as the council notes, you created a subcommittee just for various projects, and this was the first one that has been tackled by that committee. And so I'd like to have the mayor pro tem, she's got some, some great ideas and give us a little background on just what alternative funding could mean and could look like. Keep in mind that we're putting together several different pieces and components to bring to you at the next council meeting on alternative funding. So tonight's not the night to answer all your questions about what is every source of alternative funding, but we're putting together a package, a recommendation to bring to the council on the August thirteenth meeting. But I'm going to turn this over to mayor pro tem to kind of just give us a little bit of background on alternative funding and what it'd look like.
Thank you, mayor. My background has given me the opportunity to deal with alternative funding for a number of years. And generally, alternative funding as a, is a major topic is ways for communities and people and ideas and projects to come together and maximize their opportunities for funding, for materials and especially for success of projects. The list that I'm going to read to you and give minor explanations, this is certainly not an ending list. There are other opportunities that I'm sure that maybe I'm not even aware of, but these are some things that I have worked with in the past. I think everyone's familiar with grants. Grants are through many, many different sources and opportunities. Sometimes they come from, from the federal government, sometimes they come from state, sometimes from county. Sometimes they come from community foundations. Sometimes they come from Lowe's store. You just, you just think about it and there are many opportunities and sometimes we don't, are not even aware of them. But grants are usually very specific in what they are funding for. Some of those that we might be looking at for the city of Rome would be beautification, safety, health and welfare, recycling, special projects as, for the fire department, for the police department, alternative power sources, historical, and of course, those are just some that, that are out there. There are many, many topics. And so based on whatever your particular need is, it's a great thing to, to research. Grants often come with the stipulation that whoever it is that's applying for the funding and those who would benefit from the funding have to have skin in the game. And they often call that in-kind or matching funds. And those matching benefits and things that have value do not necessarily have to always be cash matching funds. Sometimes it can be the value of what volunteers do. And I'm going to give you some information about leveraging, and that's what we call that, is how you pull together many pieces for the benefit of something that's much bigger than that. There are funding opportunities, like I said, that we can research by visiting with some other municipalities to see how they funded particular things. One example is Fort Worth took their Gwen School and they renovated it for municipal purposes for that building. And so we are visiting with them to see what they accessed to help them be successful with that project is an option for us. Volunteerism, do not minimize the value of volunteers. Rome already benefits from a lot of volunteers, whether it's head of B and Z or Parks and Rec, our steering committees, the senior group, the, our veterans, we all know the value of volunteerism. But when you're working on grants and funding opportunities, the volunteer element has monetary value. So it may be somebody volunteers to paint two or three of the buildings, building offices, the offices in the building. And instead of hiring a painter to come in and do it, maybe a volunteer decides that they want to volunteer to do that. That has value and can translate then to a grant that might be funding that piece of the project. It does have monetary value, translates to money. Another item is corporate and community sponsors. Sometimes corporations will come up with something that's important to them. Sometimes they give money, sometimes they give materials, sometimes they give labor, but all of that has value. Community sponsors. We do have a group that is in the beginning stages of organizing and that would be former students of the Rome school system. And so that is being organized to see what, what the former students might have an interest in in helping our community take advantage of this situation and save the school that they once attended. Another item is legacy giving. And that would be where maybe that you have someone in the community who passes away and you want to give a donation in their memory or in honor of someone that has offered a lot to the community and maybe it's their birthday or anything similar to that. But legacy has got to do with something that lives on. And again, an example is maybe the students of Rome decide that they want to come up with a fundraiser and that would be part of legacy giving. Individuals and families quite often that have had someone that works in the community very hard, they may want to give that. We did that, for example, when my mom passed away, we gave some legacy giving to several things that were important to her. Area developers. We may have developers that say, you know, it's important to us, we're going to be longtime players in the community and we would like to see this happen and so we're interested in making a cash donation. Or maybe they're interested in donating some time and effort, materials, different things that they could in order to help the project along. Then there is specific funding targets. One of the most that gets advertisement lightly is a GoFundMe account. But, so there's nothing that prohibits us from putting that out there at large for anyone who has an interest in doing that. Another item is sale of vacant properties that the city might own. Current budget appropriations. And let's say that, again, that can be related to grants. As we look at grants and then we're looking for that matching fund or we'll just call it matching funds, maybe we have an appropriation in our budget for a specific project that's relative to the grant that we want to apply for. That particular funding can be included in part of our in-kind or matching funds. Of course, there's always a possibility for low-interest bonds or loans, that would be some other alternative funding. It would just depend on specifically, in our particular situation in Rome, some of the things that we see other smaller communities taking advantage of, we're not going to be eligible for some of that, namely that's related to community because of our median income of the residents of the city of Rome. It exceeds the ninety percentile. And so that is going to give us some limitation. And so these other funding opportunities are going to be very important to us. Now, it does not prevent us from taking advantage of rural developments, very low interest rates that they have available. So we'll be looking at all opportunities, we're already involved in that. We're already starting some things and as the mayor indicated, when we have our meeting then on August the thirteenth, we will have a list of funding opportunities that we've identified. It won't be complete because it's ever-changing and ever, and it's forever, new information pops up. We'll be looking at through the, not just for this project, but we will continue to look for alternative funding to do with the fire department, the police department, anything that has to do with improving our infrastructure, anything to do with Parks and Rec. And those are just some of the things. Like I said, there's, there's always opportunities that we're not aware of. But yeah, we need to be sensitive and looking for that. We're also exploring what's the best way with some of these opportunities to apply for those, who is going to administrate those. And of course, it's going to depend on the funding possibility and for each one will have a unique answer for that. So we have lots of opportunities, it's the coordination of it that takes time, the investigation, the research that's necessary, and of course, then the strategic planning of the timing for that and the qualifications in satisfying those. So, does anybody have any questions?
Mayor pro tem priest.
Yes, sir.
You've made quite the education, I, for alternative funding, I had no idea that there were so many different varied options available to us. The matching funding on the grants, again, it's, thank you, you've done a fun job.
You're welcome. And I would like to just, I'm glad you mentioned that to me, Mr. Eason. I want everyone to understand that leveraging is when you combine several things to satisfy the matching funds so that you then qualify and hopefully are recipients. When you apply for a grant, the more that you can demonstrate that your support group is broad and diversified and unique in its concept, the better chance you have for the award. And one of the things I'm just going to throw out there, and certainly it's, I'm not suggesting that we do this, I've just seen something similar to that happening. Let's take the landscaping that we're going to need at the new facility. So someone decides they want to make a cash donation. And, and I'm just going to use a round number that I personally came up with. And let's just say it's a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars and someone wants to make that cash donation and they earmark it specifically for that particular portion of the project. Well, then we get some volunteers who say, you know what, we will help plant those plants instead of hiring a nursery or a landscaping company to do that. Then let's say we have a volunteer that goes over to Lowe's or one of the local nurseries around and says, listen, we, we have this project, would you be willing to donate some plant material for us? And they say, and, and they said, sure, well, we will donate three to five hundred dollars worth of plant material for your volunteers to install. Then we look to see what the Parks Department, who that would be their responsibility to oversee, what would they be willing to do as far as the design and time that they spend on that, which is a voluntary group of people. So their time, their effort, and anyone that they can get to help them as far as the design portion of that would all be considered hours of work that has been contributed to the project. And finally, ultimately, in our budget, our public works department maintains city property. And so the public works department then would, would give us a number of how much time, effort, overhead that their care for the first year at least, would that take? And so that has value and of course, their time, effort and overhead is covered by our budget. And so that is a city contribution. You add all of that together and you, and I've kind of done that on paper just for fun. And what I came up with, that at a minimum, that value is probably about five thousand dollars. Well, if that, if the matching funds is a ten percent situation, that would qualify us then for something along the lines of thirty to fifty thousand dollars for that. So volunteerism, a cash donation, some work by some volunteers, all of a sudden helps pay for or meets and grows to become through leverage, something between thirty and fifty thousand dollars that taxpayers are not having to pay for, but instead comes off out of the budget for our particular project. Now, that's an ideal situation, but it, but I've seen that happen and I've been a part of that kind of thing before. So leveraging by putting all those pieces together grows into something much bigger for the benefit of a large project. There's probably more than you wanted to hear, but.
No, it's, it's a great educational discussion to help everybody understand when we say alternative funding, what we're working on, are all those elements that you brought up to maximize what we're going to have to spend out of pocket. to maximize what we're going to have to spend out of pocket and what also counts as monetary value that people may not consider as having value. But it does, and it will help us in the long run. So I appreciate you giving us that information. Are there any questions for Mayor Pro Tim Priest on, on that? Okay. If not, that's the group has been working with to identify all those pieces for you. And like I said, we'll be bringing that back to council on August 13th for presentation of our findings. So before we leave this one, actually, items H and I are kind of tie into this, but I want to keep those at the end. Believe that part of, part of the funding will, will probably be a bond. We're, we're looking at a couple of options. And, and so that's why you see item H on there. And then also, there's been discussion at previous council meetings on selling of the city, old city hall. And so we're bringing that back to you to consider having that sold and utilizing those funds to build the permanent home that we showed you tonight in the renderings. So we'll get to those in a little bit. But that's all we had on the municipal complex. Are there any questions, comments at this point? Okay, if not, we'll go on to item F. Discussion regarding. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Could I just suggest, the Mayor Pro Tim, while you're working on that committee, it might be wise to start developing some sort of policy on how you're going to accept donations and what the criteria will be. And I can certainly send Cynthia some, some other examples or samples that I've seen. But maybe eventually you're going to want to turn this over to staff and they're going to want some guidance on, on what criteria they use to accept gifts and how they're going to be used. So we probably need to go, start thinking now about developing a, a large, a policy to govern that.
Sure, yes, that is a good point.
And not only, not only that, and, and that's, that is a very important thing, Carbon, about that. But, but also we want to be able to keep good records of, of all types of donations. And so we're, we are definitely going to have, have to have a way to have a paper trail. Especially cash is a little bit easier to, to, to track. Volunteer hours are something that we actually have to keep a record of for that, and we'll have to come up with a, a way to do that. But then in the administration of the grant itself, we'll want to be sure that we, we, we have good records for that.
Yes. Those are good points. So yes, we need to have that policy as part of our presentation, that we have that in place before any action is taken on any plans going forward. So yes, we do need to do that. And, and the funding committee is only meant to, to begin this framework. They're not meant to, the members are not meant to, you know, administer, run all these programs. That is not the role of the committee, but that will be farmed out to the appropriate people who need to be managing those different pieces of, of the. Do it. Okay, item F, discussion regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. We're, we're still working off the first presentation that was shown to you, I believe, on June 25th. So we've been compiling notes of comments and recommendations that council's given us for the last few council meetings. We will bring those changes to you next week on our special meeting on July 30th. I'd like to also remind the council that the certified tax rule is due out by July 25th, which is Saturday. This will provide the city with the final numbers, which will be used to adjust the budget as needed from the preliminary tax values that were sent out back in April and what that preliminary proposed budget is based on. Any changes in the certified tax rule will also be reflected in the proposed budget that will be brought for your consideration on July 30th. Are there any comments on the budget at this time from council? Anything that you've seen? I know we've, we've got a list going, but is there anything that we haven't mentioned before that you've seen or would like to see in the proposed budget? Okay, if not, then I have one thing that I want to put out to you as a council and then bring back next week. But as the city has seen a continual increase in our sales tax revenue over the years, I started looking at the debt that the city has and if more of it should be funded by the increased sales tax revenue and less reliant on the property tax revenue. So after consulting with the city attorney, the city auditor, and reviewing all the relevant financial information, they agree that the city can use the sales tax revenue for payment of non-bond debt. And then therefore, we would reduce the debt service property tax rate. The allocation of that sales tax in the budget would need to be disclosed. It would need to disclose the amount of the sales tax collected that's going to be earmarked and used for the payment of the finance agreements that we have in place. So the portion of the sales tax revenue, which we receive on a monthly basis, and the portion that's attributed to non-bond debt payments would be held in an interest and sinking fund account to be able to make the payments when they come due. This is similar to what we do. Our maintenance and operations portion of the property tax. Then we have our interest in sinking, our debt service portion of property tax. So now we want to do something similar with sales tax. So that's what I want to show you in the next presentation of the budget in a week, that we can accomplish that financial strategy to benefit the city as well as the residents who pay property taxes. You know, since we've seen the continual increases in sales tax revenue, we do want to shift more of the debt to sales tax revenue instead of property tax because that puts the burden for the debt payment on a voluntary discretionary tax rather than on a property tax. So if you are supportive of this proposed idea that I brought today, I'll add that to the budget and break out the sales tax revenue line to show you how that would look on paper. It does not change the net effect of the budget. We're not increasing, decreasing the budget. We're just allocating a portion of sales tax revenue to make those payments that are already included in the proposed budget and, and not have those coming out of the property tax as a debt service.
Hey, Michelle? This is Councilmember Crenshaw. Yeah, it sounds like we can use that to service non-bond debt. And if we can do that, maybe it will free up other funds to, to service the bond debt, correct?
Um, yes, if we, if we are just including our bond debt on the property tax side, then yes, we do have one bond that will be paid off in a couple of years. And so the timing of that bond being paid off with the timing of a potential bond for the municipal complex, if we can coincide this to where one's paid off and one's picked up, then the effect to the taxpayers will be minimized and not so much, you know, because we would have two bonds.
It would be a zero-sum game. Basically zero, it would, it would be a negligible impact. And if it's no impact to taxpayers, where we can use this money to, to service that debt with existing funds, that would be optimal, I would think.
Correct, correct. We're trying to minimize the impact of any proposed bond for the municipal complex to the taxpayer. Yes.
Well, I would support that.
Okay. Thank you for, for that. Does any, any of the other council have any thoughts on that? Any questions, comments?
I'd like to see, see what it's going to look like. If you would, you know, kind of do a sheet on that for us. So we can take a look and see where it's going to lead us.
Sure, sure, I can do that.
So this is some of your CPA wiles that came up with this?
Yes, that's, that's why they pay me the big bucks as the mayor. You know, so one of the goals of a finance person is just to, to, you know, maximize every, every part of what you have, you know, in your assets, manager debt. You know, it's the whole picture in managing that. And so it, it is a challenge, but you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's the taxpayers' money and we owe it to the taxpayers to find the, the best financial realize the impact to the taxpayers, but give them the most benefit that we can to the, to the city as a whole. So that's, that's really our overall goal.
You're just moving pots of money. I mean, it's, it's basically a zero-sum game. You just got to move pots of money.
Right. You, you, you do things in, in the right sequence and, you know, follow a methodology and you can sometimes get where you thought you might not be able to get. So I will, I will make those changes. I'll make the sheet that Councilmember McCosky asked for and have that for next week. So we, we do have a lot of things to do between now and next meeting to prepare as far as the budget for, for your viewing and review so we can move forward with posting the final proposed version from the council meeting. All right. If there aren't any more questions or discussion on that, agenda item, we'll go on to regular agenda, new business. Item G, discussion and any necessary action regarding police department residential patrol efforts and community engagement with police. So we just wanted to touch base with the council and the residential patrol efforts are going, if we're getting good comments, good feedback, if there's something that we need to change. And then just, you know, want to kind of talk about some of the community engagement with the police. Right now, you know, our, our PD does a fabulous job. We, you know, appreciate what they do. You know, the price that they pay to do that, the time away from their families, the, you know, the, the dangers and risks that they take every day of putting on the shirt that they put on. So the environment that we're in now, there's a lot of negativity. So we want to kind of make sure that we're supporting our police locally and what kind of community engagement opportunities are out there for them to interact with the public and things like that. So I will see if Chief Love and Sergeant Brown are on the line. If one of you want to speak to the residential patrol program, how that's working, what you're seeing from the police side of it.
Go ahead, Sergeant Brown.
Recently, we've had, just on the last report I did for y'all, our area patrols are just, they've, they've blown up since Frueen's been, or the part-time officer Frueen's been out, stepping outside. And ever since that, I mean, our area patrols are just increased. I've talked to people in the neighborhoods and they seem to enjoy having a police car in and around their neighborhoods for the most part during the daytime hours. It, it just makes them feel more secure and safe from what they've said.
Sure. Have you seen, has the COVID, the pandemic and, and our, our new world that we kind of all live in, has that affected that program in any way or proven to be a challenge for, or outreach in the community?
The biggest problem we have is that we're trying to limit the actual face-to-face encounters with anyone, you know, unless we have to. So if, if I see, you know, used to if I saw somebody, because Crown Point's the easiest just because the houses are so close to the street. If I see somebody outside, it wouldn't be a big deal to stop and talk to them. But now, I mean, people are uneasy, especially with what we're doing, people we're dealing with. I'm sure people are uncomfortable being so close to us, especially, you know, because, you know, you never know who we might have dealt with before we were getting out talking to them. So we're trying, we're trying to limit, we're trying to limit the, the up-close contacts with people just, just for that reason.
Okay, so the social distancing.
I like just being in the cars in the neighborhood. Yeah. It's a good thing, I just, I just know you're there. Yeah.
Clearly, you and I haven't talked to the same people. Because I, the people that I've talked to around town, they haven't encountered any of the officers getting out of their vehicles and talking to them. People I've talked to have said that they'll wave at the police driving by and the police don't wave back. I have personally encountered that. In fact, just recently, since the last council meeting, I was in a parking lot. My vehicle was parked. I had a Rome police officer 20, 25 feet away. His window was down. We established eye contact. I smiled, I waved. I couldn't hear it, but I imagined it was a grunt because he turned away and drove off. Okay, no acknowledgement at all. People, the people I've talked to would love to have the police stop. And yes, we need social distancing. They can stay 20 feet away, they can stay 30 feet away. But just stop and introduce yourself and, you know, mowing the lawn, have somebody stop and say hello. Because I, I see the police, I see the police reports. We get so many tickets written and we, I hear about the drug bust and everything happened on 287. But I don't think those are directly benefiting the citizens. I think the citizens would really like to have police officers they recognize, police officers that talk to them, smile at them. I mean, we have a national problem. We have a national problem with confidence in our police. And I think it has to do with this separation between the two. I have spoken with, I've spoken with Chief Love, I've spoken with the mayor, I've spoken with, I spoke with Joe, I've spoken with Cynthia. It all seems to have fallen on deaf ears. I'd like to see a change in how our police department works. I don't believe the police department is a revenue generating body. I think that our citizens are paying for the police and their tax dollars. And I'd like to see the police getting to know our citizens. And I want our citizens to get to know them. And it's not just on national night out. Okay, I mean, it's, it's every day. And I don't want a residential officer, I want every officer. You know, now, I'm not a policeman, okay? I can't tell you what proper procedure is. I can't tell you what best practices are. But I know that nationally, best practices are causing the, the country problems. And if we're going to be able to address these issues, I think we need to start at the absolute lowest level. And that would be a small town in Texas. So I'd like to see new policies in place. I want to see, I don't want to see the police spending their time out on 287. Okay? Because those tickets are not helping the individuals. They're not, they're not making the police know to the children. I'd love for it to go back to the days when you look, when you can look at your kids and you can say, the police are your friend. Okay? If you run into problems, go to the police. And I want them to know the police and I want the police to smile. I want them to smile at the police. I want it to be friendly. But I'd like to see something, something happening here. Because like I said, I've spoken with quite a few people and I don't see any action. And like I said, I had that happen with one of the police officers this past week. It was like, oh my gosh, how rude can this be? All I did was smile and wave. A smiling wave would have been wonderful of received back to just acknowledge that I existed.
Let me, let me say something on that particular incident. You know, if I knew the date and time and where it was at, I could address with that officer. But I can tell you this, a lot of times, the officers, when they're on the side of the road, stop something on the 2A radio, they're doing something with the computer, listening to something on the computer. They're listening to a call. And, you know, once they hear the call, they, they don't really have a situation where they can stop and wave and talk to people.
I understand that Chief Love, but the thing is, this was in a parking lot. My window was down, his window was down, his radio was not on because I could have heard it. He established eye contact with me. He wasn't talking to anyone and he wasn't on the computer. Now, I don't want to give you the date, time and place because I'm not calling him out personally. And I don't want him to receive any kind of problem.
I need to be able to do that, Mr. Easton, to address the problem. Because just like I've got Officer Pretty in office with me right now, and while this conversation is going on, he gave me two examples up, up in Crown Point that, you know, he had people talk to, they were getting ready to have a party, they interacted, they asked him to stay for the party and he didn't. Over on Red Bud, he sees kids and gives them the sticker badges. I mean, I, I really believe for every negative story, I can give you two positives.
And I think that's wonderful. As I said to Sergeant Brown, perhaps we're just not talking to the same people. Because the people that I'm talking to, the people I'm talking to, they drive by the police, they wave, and there's, there's no acknowledgement. And yes, I understand they can be on the radio. I understand they can be distracted. But what I want to see, again, I guess the most obvious thing to me is how many times I see the police sitting out on 287, you know, trying to give tickets. I don't know why we spend so much time out there. The Department of, the Highway Patrol can, can write a lot of tickets on those areas.
I understand that, Mr. Easton. But if we don't work that highway, writing citations, we will work at working crashes. I'm telling you, if we stop working the highway, our crashes will go up. Spend a whole lot more time working a crash than we do working a few tickets.
Now, are we talking about because the highway is, is not supported? We need to talk to the [inaudible].
I think we're getting off topic.
So.
Just like to make a comment.
A couple of issues. Maybe we need to do a separate meeting. We'll be with the city administrator, Mr. Easton and Police Chief Sergeant Brown. We can do a separate meeting on any particular issue that you have. But I think.
Because I've never seen, I don't have that experience. Every time I see the police, they got a job to do. They don't have time to socialize. But every time I see them, they wave, you know, I have no problem with it. I'm just glad they're there.
See the same thing. Every time they're driving through the subdivision and I'm out here, I see them going by, I wave at them, they wave back and smile at me. I'm glad to see them here.
He might just be having, like the rest of them.
Neighborhood, but I frankly don't have them wave at me. They don't, they don't wave at me. Now, maybe I've done something to offend the police department, but.
Well.
I think this is something for a private discussion.
So overall, you know, residential patrol efforts, it sounds like we've, we've gotten a lot of good feedback. There might be a couple of things that we need to deal with in a separate conversation. Community engagement is definitely proved to be a challenge with COVID. You know, for example, you know, National Night Out, I know, is going to be something that we evaluate whether that's something, A, we can do with any orders the governor may issue between now and then, and B, you know, how comfortable people gathering and what size that would be. So we've got to be thinking about alternative ways to engage with the public. You know, maybe it's through social media spots, you know, we spotlight something good with the, the police department, or, you know, they, they change a flat tire for somebody, you know, stuck on the road and, you know, they get kudos on Facebook. We, we need to make sure that we're, we're looking at ways to help promote the good things that are happening with our police department. So if any of you have any ideas or suggestions, you know, get with the police chief, you know, get with Sergeant Brown. Because I know they're working hard to figure out different ways to engage the community while still doing the other things that are important in their job, that require attention behind the scenes, that a lot of people don't see in the middle of the night when they're doing things. So any comments Sergeant Brown, Chief Love? Do you have any, anything kind of else to add to the community engagement and the residential patrol program?
I would like to add something. I know it's, it's not exactly on the same exact topic, but it's about engagement. Tomorrow, or I think tomorrow, hopefully, or maybe Monday, we're going to post a picture of our new patrol car with the, with the new graphics.
Yes.
And part of, part of the new graphics, we've enlarged the name Rome on the car and, and reversed it. Instead of saying police first, it says Rome first. So everybody knows, you know, we're a billboard for the city now. So we just, we think that'll help, we think that'll help, help people feel more at ease. You know, we're, we're, at the end of the day, we're just city employees. So I mean, we're, we work for the citizens so they can, they can stop and talk to us, wave us down. And we're more than happy and willing to help people. I mean, we had a lady post on a, on the Rome Detective Events page the other day I saw where she talked about how she had a flat tire and pulled into the police station and Officer Bernard changed the tire or helped her fix the tire and, you know, just went above and beyond. So I mean, I just, that kind of speaks for our, our level of service to the citizens, I think.
Sure, yes.
The police department's there not to be social workers. They have to deal with some nasty ass people. So let's cut them a little slack. We don't have that many policemen. I'd rather them just be out there working. And when I see them driving around, I know they're out there and I'm, that's okay with me.
Well, I would still ask, if anybody has a negative experience, I need to know about it. Because I, I think we're going to find it was just, you know, something that happened in passing and probably shouldn't have happened normally, but I, I can't address it. And I'm not going to call anybody in and give them two days off or fire them or anything. But, you know, I think anytime we can explain to officers who, who fail our mission in any way, we can explain to them how that happened. I think that can improve our, our service to the community.
Yeah, good, good point, Chief. So, well, is Chief Love, is there anything that we as the community can do to help you in the challenging roles that you do have in the environment today? What, what can we do to help you? What, what can we share with our citizens to tell them that would be a benefit to, to you to do your job successfully?
The biggest benefit to us would be citizens using their eyes and ears and reporting what they see and doing it via the telephone to our dispatcher. One of the, one of the drawbacks we have of having Facebook is I have a tremendous amount of people who report crimes either by posting it on Facebook or through Instant Messenger. And that page is not monitored 24 hours, seven days a week. We can't do that. And I stress to people, you know, don't worry about calling 911. Call 911. Call the sheriff's office, you know, regular direct line and, and, because that's our line to you, is through the sheriff's office dispatch. And it, it breaks down if we don't use it. And that's, that's our biggest thing. And don't hesitate if you have a problem that's not an emergency and you want to speak to me or another officer. Or again, call the sheriff's office and tell them you need to talk to Chief Love, or you need to talk to Sergeant Brown. You know, we'll get back with you as soon as we can. And we, you know, that way we can address whatever problem or issue. You know, we have people come up here every day to this building that have to knock on the door now, wait for us to come to the door with a face mask. But they've got all kinds of, of little problems and advice they need. It may be something to do with how to settle on a state issue, on a deceased family member, or how to settle a, a problem between two people having domestic issues. We, the gamut is just from one end to the other. And, you know, we always try to help them, you know, whenever we can, or at least direct them the way. We can't be lawyers. We can't give legal advice. But we tell them, you know, the things that we can do. And if it comes down to they're asking legal advice, then we'll tell them you're going to have to talk to an attorney. But that's the main thing is communication. That's, that's what, what I'm missing about the National Night Out is we're not going to have that communication. Our Neighborhood Crime Watch program is on a stall because, you know, we can't really have made meetings safely, you know, even if you're in a house. So, you know, we've got to, we've got to find other ways to get closer.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. No, agreed. It's definitely a challenge. I appreciate you sharing that with us and what we can communicate to our citizens when they need you, how, how the appropriate way to contact you is the most efficient way. So we will work on getting that message out and helping come up with some ideas to help reach the community in, in our new social distancing environment. So thank you all for, for weighing in on that. So we'll move on to item H, discussion and any necessary action regarding authorization to consult with bond counsel regarding proposed bond election for funding municipal complex renovation project. So this does stem, as I said earlier, stems out of the Alternative Funding Committee's explorations into sources of funding. We need authorization from counsel. We're not asking to propose a bond or pass a bond tonight. That's not what we're asking. We're asking authorization to work with our bond counsel. If that is the way we are going to end up going, we need to have certain amount of paperwork done and ready August 13th to bring to the council for consideration. So we're just asking for authorization for our bond counsel to prepare anything together, together with the funding committee for a proposal for your consideration August 13th. So any questions on that?
No, I know time is short, but if, if we need to, I would definitely provide the motion that we allow the mayor to enter into negotiation with bond counsel so that we can get this moving.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Do we have a motion for Mr. Crenshaw? Do we have a second on the motion?
I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Easton. All right, we have a motion and a second. So we'll go to vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye. Aye. Did you get that one?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Are you there, Councilmember Crenshaw?
Yeah, I said aye.
I heard him say, uh.
Yeah, you were cutting in and out.
Sorry, I'm, I'm at the community center. Internet may be a little spotty. Mayor Pro Tim Priest, aye. Thank you. Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, motion carries. We'll move forward with working with bond counsel. All right, item I, discussion and any necessary action regarding First Street. We wanted to bring this back to the council proposing utilizing a sale of the building located at 105 West First Street and using those proceeds to offset the cost to find a permanent home for, for City Hall and the council meetings and for, and all the other meetings at the municipal complex on School Road, the renovations that you saw tonight. So we, we've kind of had this on before, but I think it's time, if we're going to talk about doing this, that we would like to, you know, proceed. If we're not going to go back to that building, and that, that's been some of the discussion that we've had at previous meetings, then it's just sitting there not doing anything. And it would be awesome to find someone who, it, it's the appropriate size, appropriate location, you know, it would fit the need for something to open and, you know, it not just be a vacant building sitting there. So we're asking if you're ready to make that move and if you are, if you would consider a motion to move forward with staff, what it would look like to sell that.
Before we go, before we move forward on that, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, we could definitely use the money. But I, I always want to have mitigation plans for things that may go one, either way. It's a resource that the city has today. We're, we're talking about a bond for the new municipal complex. It is possible that that bond fails. And I don't want to have already sold that pre-piece of property if the bond fails. I hope the bond passes desperately. Because I know we need it. But we have to consider what could happen. I would like to reserve the decision on selling it or make selling it dependent upon, or contingent upon passing of the bond. Because if the bond doesn't pass, we may need that piece of property.
Yeah, but I'd like to bring up that, you know, what we've looked at before in that piece of property. It was some considerable amount of money into it. And also to do renovations in it to accommodate the council and the mayor and so forth is going to cost us considerably more. Not as much as the new municipal building is going to cost us, but it is going to cost us a lot more than we, money that we don't have in the budget.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely. I, I understand and I agree. I recall, what was it, two years ago? We got an estimate for renovate that building to, you know, put the floor in, put the ceiling in, put the walls in, and make it so that we could virtually like it was before. And I remember the estimate being, what, I think it was $400,000. And then we, the hurricane hit the Texas coast, and then we were told that the price of materials went up and that it would be over $400,000. The building itself, I don't think you could sell for that much. So yes, Ms. McCauskey, I understand that it, it's, it's a, right now, there's no, any fiscal responsible way to use it. I just, it's a, it's an asset that we may need, okay, if the bond doesn't pass.
Mayor, can I, can I jump in and add just two points? It will require an ordinance of the city council to actually affect the sale. I, I think all that I would really need from you now is authorization for staff to go forward. There are a couple of options that they're going to have to investigate on selling this property. They can do it by public auction. They can do it by sealed bids. But there are some time constraints on getting the, the notices out and figuring out which is the better way to go. And I would remind you, the city is not obliged to accept any bid at this point. So all of this would be subject to a future vote of the council to accept a bid or a proposal to sell the property. Right now, all that I've recommended to the mayor is that she seek council approval to go forward with staff investigating which is the best way and authorize them to start evaluating if we want to try and sell it, how to do that, and what, which way do we want to go?
Like to make a motion that we do so. At least investigate, you know, what the building is worth and what avenues we have in keeping it or in selling it.
Well, before, before we vote on that or give a second, I just want to bring up that someone earlier had a point as well, is making a historical site. And I'm sure that building's been around for a long while. I know that it's going to take a lot to fix it up. But as we've heard earlier on, there's alternative funding on things. And if we can get the approval and go through the process, I know it's lengthy and it's going to take a while. But if we get that deemed as a historical building, I'm sure that would open us up to other alternative funding for different types of grants and stuff. And then maybe we can use that to get it fixed up and use for something else that the city may want. So I just want to throw those options out there as well.
I just wanted to ask if you have investigated to what it would cost to return that building to a historical building acceptance. Because if you go that route, you're going to have to restore that building to its original specification so that it can be deemed an historical building.
Right. So, so the issue is, before we even talk about that, the size of So, so the issue is, before we even talk about that, the size of the building doesn't work for the city anymore. So what would you envision in that building? The parking doesn't work. You know, the building truly, it's gutted, there's no floor, there's no electrical, there's no plumbing. Um, so even if you do the historical route, that's, that's going to end up potentially costing more because the estimates that we looked at nearly five years ago, um, was for, you know, modern day type construction, not necessarily to the historic standard that would be required. So what do you envision there? Because the, the space there is not big enough to accommodate what we need for meetings any longer. Um, you know, the city hall square footed that we have currently and we're already, you know, busting at the seams and we've got storage offside. So that's what I need to hear from council, because I've not heard any, any use for it that works. You know, if we talk about splitting up city hall staff into different buildings, you know, and there's less people there, but then, you know, we've got to find a place for those people if we don't stay in our current location, because they're not all going to fit there with what they need to do. Um, so I need some feedback from you guys on what you envision long term.
My feedback is we need to sell it.
Okay.
I, I'd like to make a comment. If, if it's all right if I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we, we have had that recently appraised, haven't we? Didn't we have that appraised?
It, it's been a couple of years, so any sale would require a new appraisal, um, you know, given the market and the COVID. Yeah.
All right. Um, you know, when someone had suggested that maybe we go ahead and repair it and rent it out, I, I would like to say, uh, that to, a couple of things. The first thing is, um, I don't think we ought to be in the rental business. Uh, either we use the building or we sell the building, one of the two. Um, and, um, the, um, the other, the, the thing about the historical thing, I've, I've done some research on that in the past. You know, that is, not only is that have to be up to a certain standard, who's going to do that? I mean, from a staff standpoint, to have somebody look into, come up with the funding and work, work long hours for that, because they are, a, a historical building requires huge attention to the detail, the expense of putting it back in a historical situation. You know, who's going to do that? Who's going to go through the funding process? Who's going to, uh, execute that? Uh, that, you know, we, that is definitely not in our staff's time to spend doing that. It would be astronomical from time and money. Even if you could find the funding, there are, there are strict qualifications for the funding in, in the, uh, the terms of how you restore that. So it, it's a huge undertaking for historical reasons. Um, so I just want to point out that that would take staff. Uh, it would take, um, a lot of time, a lot of money to do that. And, um, so I don't mind, you know, doing the investigative work, but not finalize any kind of a sale until after, uh, the November election date is passed and we have a decision. Um, if we were to use that building for anything, we would be looking at, at using every building that we've got scattered all, all, you know, scattered over town, because that building is not big enough to do everything we needed to do. And, uh, so I think that's part of, uh, what we're looking at is, as all, the alternatives if that doesn't pass. And so we'll have more information on the thirteenth, but, um, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not in favor of having rental property in any fashion. That is not what the city is about. We either eat, use it or sell it.
I'm not, I'm not in favor either. I was just going to look it out there, but what I don't want to see happen is someone purchases that and then they come in and fix it and make it look completely different than every other building around there. And so now, you know, we, we've got different looking buildings or something. So it doesn't match the, the planning that we have from all these committees. So I just don't want to see something come in there and change the way that that area looks or something that, you know, we might not necessarily need in our town at this time.
Sure, okay. Councilmember McCabe, one of the, one of the things that, uh, we need to remember is zoning on that property is public, um, like, uh, what, what is it, public and school? And so if, if someone purchased it, they're going to have to do a zoning change. So the city's going to be involved in, in that aspect, because they're going to have to request to change to something else. So we have a, a little bit of, say, if you will, and, and how that will end up, depending on what the zoning is. If it's not compatible with what the plan is, then the council could, could deny, um, a zoning change request.
Okay. I just, you know, I just want us to be careful and make sure that we don't have the wrong type of business or that they just completely remodel the entire outside of the building. It makes it look different than everything else, it doesn't fit what our vision of, uh, that area. So that was my.
Sure.
That's, that's, that's reasonable.
Sure, and, and that, that's a, that's a good concern. I, I, I think, you know, it sounds like there's kind of a wide variety of ideas on this subject. Um, you know, so if, if we need to, to pause and come back on the thirteenth, um, I know there's a motion on the table, um, I can call for a second, um, on that. Um, but if you want some time to think about that, we can put together some more, um, of our presentation for the next council meeting on the thirteenth. Um, does that sound like the way council wants to go at this time, since everybody seems a little, um, on different ends of the spectrum or in.
I think that we should go ahead and approve the original motion you made, because as, uh, Mr. Atkins pointed out, that we weren't, we're not approving the sale of it. What you're approving is.
Correct.
Looking into it. And I think.
I would second the motion on the table.
What'd you say, Kenny?
I said I second the motion that's already put, put forth to allow the mayor to direct staff to do this investigative work that's needed to, uh, find out what we need to know to, to affect a sale if that is what is decided.
Okay, Mr. Crenshaw, I've got your second on the motion that's on the floor. Uh, Councilmember Easton, did you have, um, some more thoughts on that?
Nope.
Okay. All right, any other comments or thoughts? Okay, um, if there aren't any more comments, uh, thoughts, questions, uh, we have a motion and a second on the table. We'll go down the roll, um, for a vote, starting with Councilmember McCabe.
Aye. Aye.
Shaw. Was that an aye? Did I hear you?
Yes.
He did aye.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Priest.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Easton.
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, motion carries. Uh, just a reminder, this is not an authorization to sell the building. It's just to investigate, um, uh, the process and bring something back to council. Um, so we are finished with that agenda item. Are there any future agenda items? If not tonight, um, email your agenda items. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion we adjourn.
Just real quick, um, Shannon and Cynthia, why I've been sitting. No, just quick, you, they, Shannon last. Councilmember Crenshaw. Councilmember Crenshaw has made a motion to adjourn. Uh, do we have a second on that motion?
I'm second.
All right, Councilmember McCowsky. All right, with the motion and a second on the table, we'll go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe. It's a legal matter. You don't need to adjourn, it's a legal matter. You left, uh. Councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw. Well, it's a legal matter.
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw.
It's okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Priest.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Easton.
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Uh, real quick. The meeting is adjourned.